After you can sign your name and address on this report, but please tell us your name and address when you come up. The statement of public notice also points out that this meeting is being reported. The first thing on our agenda is the board presentation. So we're going to have the report on the long-term facilities project.
So I'd like to thank that we have such a big turnout because everybody is just trying to have some fun playing. But when I look around the room and I realize that half the people in here are the mayhem staff for other reasons, it's kind of a little downhearted. Even the computer wants to shut down. Let me, while this is loading up again, just start in with a little bit of background about this particular, this particular plan presentation. The inception of this capital plan really began in or with a report that was generated by the district's architect of record, Steve's Architectural Group, back in 2011. It was issued in December of 2011, and it was a 190-page report at that time. And they did that report in conjunction with, or did that, basically a survey of all the district's buildings and its facilities in the prior six months along with KSI engineering, because they looked at both the architectural and the mechanical as well as electrical needs of the different terms of the various district buildings in terms of the system that we're, just see if I can compare what the perspective that we do. At the time, there were, I think about 140 or so projects identified. As of this August, 154 projects have been identified. So we've added to it considerably the cost is more than 70% more than what it was. We originally looked at it, picked out, and the estimated construction cost of the 154 projects is $26 million, 740,000. We got lots of numbers. Fifty of these projects totaling just under $9.9 million will have been completed as of this summer. Included in that are 10 projects that are in progress this summer. And including those 10 projects and others that have been completed, there are 14.8 million projects that are either in process or pending. I'm going to kind of quickly go through this because this is an 81 slide deck and we don't really have that in the environment. So just a little quick look of where, what we've done since 2013. We did the new child study team offices up in the Oak Creek Tower. We created two new small group construction spaces over at Cedar Hill School. We completely modified the entire annex for those of you that are familiar with Cedar Hill School. These were all things done in 2013. We added this generator outside the board office as a result of Sandy, actually, because that happened a year before. We've taken eye with that. That was our first, in our first year together here at Burners. We repaved the entire academy area over at Liberty Corner School in 2014. Food's Room, if any of you who were on the board at that time remember the grand opening of the Food's Room and the lovely food that they served us. We haven't had any since. In the summer of 2015, we re-turfed the artificial field at Weet Field. In summer of 2015, we built the Wellness Center, which overlooks Weet Field. In the summer of 2015, we began the first of our many HVAC upgrade projects. So we, those projects, and they're all the same. We replaced the ventilators, which we've done a survey in the district, average 35 to 40 years old. And we upgraded each of these units to include air conditioning as well as a digital control system. And we did it, two wings in the high school that could make it be done at that point. Summer of 2016, we renovated the girls' varsity softball field. And we also, in the summer of 2016, did various entrance security enhancements in the role for elementary schools, the most complex of which was Cedar Hill School, because it actually involved, required that we figure the whole front office set up. Summer of 2016, we're also doing the Liberty Corner School HVAC project. So all of these projects, the general approach, we did go into all the instructional spaces, the classrooms specifically that students are in, and replaced the ventilators, put in AC, and of course, we've run in software systems, which I reported earlier, it's a Last summer, we did Oak Street HVAC project. And this is kind of typical of every one of those, you don't see it, but we had to put in new electrical service to support these new systems. So that conduit, that big pipe DC running out, got the out, if you were on the building, obviously, wiring won't be in there. I should have brought that section of wire that I collected from this summer's project that there, the cables are about that thick, and they went, they're incredibly heavy. Now, this is stuff you probably don't want to know, but when you spend this much of time, and it just goes to show how excited we are. Oak Street, Oak Street. Oak Street. Summer of 2017, we also did resurfacing of the artificial track. And this summer, so this summer, we did, at Liberty Corner School, there were 11 rooms that we removed, either carpeting and/or combination carpeting and linoleum and refloor. So there's, and resulted in course this nice because we, the HVAC is the summer before, so it's almost like I'm in a classroom to walk. It's going to be much easier for the custodial staff and for teachers when things are still there, accidents happen to clean up. And generally also, it kind of potentiates the full improvement of air quality that we got from putting the HVACs in, or having that old compartment. And then each of the schools had a basic roof project this year, and in total, individual projects, so you'll see like one segment here at Mount Prospect. They told, there were 189 projects that we did, and you may have noticed when you pull in here, the, there's a little bit being done at Cedar Hill School that's being finished in front of the board's office, and that's being done this week, all the other buildings that we've completed this year on Mount Prospect, the high school, and, of course, because they're physically the largest, had the greatest number of projects out of that. You can see some of the, you walk into the high school here, and you can see the sidewalk that's, alongside the backside of the pack there, and then of course, down here is the entrance. This is shot at, and that's to show the grounds was a little better job with the lawn, but on the other hand, the sidewalks are no longer properly. This second here is a little, was done earlier, that's why it's a little darker already. And then, of course, we began Phase One of a two-summer project to get HVAC upgrades, ventilator, AC controls over at William Addams. The 100, the 200 wing, who were some classrooms, and those that were done this summer, this is our room, like, this is. This is one of the classrooms, 100 wing. And for those who are really excited about engineering, this is a good graphical user interface that allows our director of facilities to look at how and even the components of any individual Airedale unit you see here are functioning at a given point in time. If this is very, I mean, recent. Okay, so we're up to what is a very long list, 154 projects. It's difficult, and I won't see it, but if I make it too large, I don't have to be able to see it. So the best I can do is go get it contained. The real thing to understand about this is that, you know, the list varies in size from building to building. This document, by the way, will be posted on the district's website in the next couple of days, so anybody who really wants to scrutinize it can do so at their leisure once that's up there. The way it's structured, it's by building. The original description that was in that report, that was a survey done as I indicated by Steel and Air Mechanical Engineering back in 2011, is in this column under descriptions, except for those projects that we've added. And I'll go through what some of those are and then immediately to the right of that is what the original construction estimate was, divided by the architect, by the architect. What's in green are all the projects that we have completed, who are will complete as of this, as of last summer. I said, excuse me, have completed as of last summer. So anything from 2012 to 2017, you'll have what the actual final cost was. And you see in some cases, that's less than what the original construction estimate is. And one of the things that I want to make a point of, and I'll talk about it again on the very last slide, is that through competitive bidding, through design, and through, in some cases, our own management of some of these projects on a smaller scale, for example, security projects, the district has saved about $1.9 million, or spent, I should say, $1.9 million less than what the original construction estimate was. What's in blue are always going to be the summer current years projects. So you've got summer 2018 in the first column, and if you don't see anything there, then it means we're not doing anything. But in this case, you'll see that for Cedar Hills, there is an R2 project. And it's relatively small in terms of dollar amount, because Cedar Hills did not have a lot of work. And three or four years ago, we did some outside work at Cedar Hill, which touched on some of these areas. So you only see $12,000 now there in terms of the cost for the projects they're doing on there right now. Column to the right would be any current projects that we're doing, inter missed to have funded, funded, which I'll talk about more in a couple of minutes, but that's the school, Belt Authority, and we will have 40% match from them on roughly $10 million worth of projects that we have done, both have completed and or have in process. So that's, that's been a significant help to us in terms of accomplishing, how do we get through that 26 million? Four plus million of that happens during these SDA grants. To the right of that, in amber, would be the SDA projects that we named, and really there are only two. One is the Phase Two of the William Addams HVAC project, and the other is the roofed project. And then immediately to the right of that, in yellow, would be any direct install projects, and those are projects that, if they are pending, would be there. But in the case of, for example, Cedar Hill, we did an upgrade to all the light, and that was a direct install project. And what do I mean by that? I mean, you get through the board of utilities, public utilities, we approved a grant that gave us a 70% match for every dollar we put up. So we paid 70 cents on every dollar paid, excuse me, they paid 70 cents on every dollar, we paid 30 cents on every one. Those would be direct install types of projects. And then the last two, the big one in kind of rob's sake blue, is the science lab renovation project that was still truly identified with the, the projects from 2011. And then we have a category of all others, and we've kind of had to lock the small group any ones in some, some place without making this a 20 column type of spreadsheet. So this goes on through, through each building, and I'm not going to really go through all those here right now. What I am going to do is kind of cut to the end. You can see at the end, there are totals for each of those columns. And then there is a mathematical recap of the grand total, 26 million, everything to write, total work in progress, is everything that's in light green that you see there. Less total offsets, which is really everything that's in amber. Don't try to remember this too, it's really recapped for you. So it's like, basically, it's a lot easier for those who like spreadsheets there, because now I work it up every year, but there's a, there's an overview of it, and so it's locked. So let me skip to that, we can go back if you have a question. As of August, as I indicated, there's 14.8 million dollars in projects in progress and pending, and pending. Identified offsets of 4.1 million, just under 4.2 million dollars. What, what makes up that 4.2 million dollars? Well, $35,000 is in the current, this we rate, 2019 budget. What specifically that was in there for was for the security entrance improvements, the interest is for, to the Ridge High School, security, to security in Ridge High School There is $1.3 million in SDA grants, which I was alluding to earlier. 600, just under $650,000 in capital reserves have already been transferred from our capital reserve to the actual, actual capital project fund. That's for the William Addams HVAC, that's our match essentially on the work that's going on there this summer. And then there remains to be generated 2 point, just under $2.2 million over the next four years. And since the inception of this plan, that number has, has been there as how we balance our projected construction need versus what we have in reserves and projects still pending. And that number actually has gone down over this period of time due to efficiencies, as I mentioned, for example, the management of the project. So to the extent that we actually save money on SDA grants, that money we already had our match, our 60% match in capital reserves, that's money that goes back into the capital reserves, which is for the actual project as an intended. Projects in progress, so less, which are the 14 million, less the offsets, total 10 million, 651. That's the important thing to remember right now. And right now, we have in our reserves that amount of money. And so I know sometimes people ask, how can that be exactly the same? Well, it's for the very reason that I was just talking about, which is that $2.1 million is always going to be whatever the difference is. And so once we plug that number, it's going to tie back to the reserves. Now, the other thing I'd like to share with you about that $2.1 million, because we've been talking about doing these presentations for four years now, you might say to me, oh, why haven't we, why are we still looking for more years of the future for that $2 million? One explanation is, I'm going to skip ahead two slides, is that we've added $2.3 million of items to the project, to the project list, and completed these projects in the last five years that weren't on the original list. So had we not done these projects that you see here, okay, we would in fact not need $2.1 million then. I think the other important thing to take away from, I could put this in perspective, when you think about, well, we've completed 50 projects and there's 154, it seems like there's an awful lot of projects left, right? Well, there are, but the fact of the matter is that six projects make up 78% of them. And these are those six projects, they represent $11.5 million, that those with Asperus, Asperus next to them are SDA co-funded. And so our actual share of these projects in total is 10 point, just under 10.1 million dollars. Door Hardware Project is something that was off the list two years ago, but back on the list. The Ridge High School Cafeteria Project is something that was added to the list last year. It has been increased in amount, because when I did this presentation last August, we had $3,650,000 there for it, with the caveat that we would like to add an additional level or floor to that for both students to use and/or an additional training space in the district. And the cost of that was in this three quarters of a million dollar range. And we talked about the possibility of going out and getting short-term financing. Since that time, we've increased it to reflect that. So as you can see, one of the things that this presentation does is it tells us that we basically no longer have to go out for short-term financing unless we're going to go beyond this. And we would, this should theoretically, based on preliminary numbers from our architect, allow us to build a new production cafeteria, should we decide that this is something that is necessary, if it wants to go to block scheduling, and it would also allow us to build a second level, which would probably seat about 100 students. So instead of some of the other options, which we had, which were stock dropping, it would allow us to have more of them sit right in a cafeteria table, be established right there, it would be easier for us. And then when we have the, one of the many trains that we have going on, I don't know how many of you have ever tried to come here on a day when there's training going on in this room for a meeting in this building, and try to find a parking place out there, this is going to give us an alternate space that actually would house probably twice as many people for training in the high school. Now, I promise you, where they're going to park, I have to tell you, there's going to be a place for them to go. What's next really is this, and it's, it's in the, we're actually having a meeting on Thursday with the construction design team and the stakeholders in the district, is really the Phase Two of the William Addams HVAC project, as well as the 400 wing curtain wall project. In there may be some minor modifications to the science labs in the 400 wing as well, which is why, one of the reasons that the stakeholder lists us as long as it is, basically, for me, with the design team, which includes our architect and mechanical engineer. So that's going to be hopefully going out, be it in the early fall this year, for award, hopefully by Thanksgiving. I'm not making a promise that that's going to happen, but that's our goal. And definitely for commencement and graduation in the summer of 2019, that's the next project that's out there. Of course, lots of other things pop up in between. The basic roof project this year, which involved wall buildings, was something that was not on the radar. We did this last year, in fact, it came up very late in this school year last year. The security project is the same when that came up. So we do have a fair amount of flexibility, and this has been kind of our, been our goal all along. And when you look back, you're going to see that the last bullet item in particular, ability to realize additional savings on the large, by, please, the larger projects first, has allowed us, as I mentioned earlier, to save money, to give a good fly to some of these other projects that has, if they come up, they're presented, whether that be something that's, you know, discretionary or something that's more driven by actual community and, you know, or perceive needs, for example, various security projects that we're doing right now. And that's the presentation. I think we got it done in half an hour, Nick. Sorry for what you said to me, so are there any questions for the board?
More of a comment than a question, because I think for the people who are, I mean, in this process, I just want to acknowledge the efforts that you have put forward over the years of security SDA grants, because we have saved the district millions of dollars in money from other sources. I just feel like I should point out every time you do this, the role of efforts. So thank you.
Sure. Just by way of explanation, the first item is a shared service agreement between the board of education and the town, in order to facilitate hiring a person to staff the entrance at Ridge High School, in the form of a special law enforcement officer of class three, which may be hired directly by the town, so you have the ingredient to work with that, or the staff that goes with that type of personnel. The second item is a amendment to the Department of Homeland Security, between education and law enforcement, with respect to the use of security cameras in our schools this summer. Speaking of projects, one of the projects undertaken was to install security cameras that can be viewed through the internet essentially remotely, such that law enforcement could be at their facilities, at the department, or even in their squad cars, assuming the equipment is available, from some type of computer or laptop, and be able to remote in and view what's going on on district security cameras. However, the law requires that in order to provide that access to law enforcement, there has to be an agreement that amends the uniform agreement between law enforcement and education. We have that agreement already, but this resolution allows us to amend that, to allow law enforcement access to that video footage. The important considerations in the agreement require that we talk about some basic operating procedures that provide security for the footage and provide the conditions under which law enforcement would actually access the cameras, essentially for emergencies. And when that emergency is over, that access will cease. And when that emergency is over, that access will cease. So, that's the essence of item number two. Item number three are the overnight trips for the forensic team. And item four are four clubs that the high school would like to start in eighteen minutes.
Is there any other questions?
I just have a question. I believe, I was reading the description of the clubs, and I believe one of them, it sounded like it was mainly fundraising, and I remember in the past, there was kind of a policy that it was fine to be fundraising, but there needed to be some other purpose of the club as well. So, I was just wondering if that's still a policy at Ridge, or has changed?
I don't know that that policy has changed. What I know is that in order to do fundraisers, they have to apply for each individual fundraiser that they're going to do. So, there is a policy to regulate the actual fundraising events that occur. That might be what you're thinking.
Yeah.
So, each, even if the club is going to do fundraisers, and that's a main goal of the club, the individual fundraisers that they do are still going to have to be approved. So, yeah, we'll follow that policy.
Okay. Yeah, because I know the other ones, they were doing some fundraising, but they also had other activities that they weren't.
I have a comment, because I was in the weeds reading the details of some of these things earlier today. And I just want to point out, for the forensic overnight tournaments, the second one, the global tourism debates in Honolulu, Hawaii, for those of you who don't know, two of our students were selected to represent the United States and the whole country in an international tournament in Honolulu. This tournament is picking up the cause of us sending our student center advisor with them, but just our students continue to establish a more successful.
Yes, she just managed to draw this to my attention.
With tears in his eyes.
Really upset that he's going to have to go.
Hurricane.
I think he's going to get over it. We can only climb one.
I just thought that.
Yeah, it's a pretty cool story. Very cool.
I got a question to answer.
Mr. Bird?
Yes, on the first three, I'm going to look at.
Mrs. Spark?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Schruck?
Yes.
Mrs. Corr?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
If we're asked a public comment on agenda items, if you have a comment, please come and tell us your name and address, and sign a couple of actors. So, we have the public comments on agenda items. And we're up to three more of them, and we have one item, someone has to answer that. One, and then.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Spark?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray? Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
It wasn't at the last meeting, so I was just.
Mrs. Corr?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Up to the finance committee, there's eighty-one items, finances, I'd like to make a condition, move on. The Mr. Sam and Mrs. Richman. I guess I'll do the finance report, which is brief, and then we can do the item beside to summarize them. We spent a lot of the finance meeting going over, the long-term capital plan that Mr. Duncan just went over, and had our chance to ask questions, so I don't need to summarize that follow through, because we just thought, but it was fascinating, so we had that. And then, construction updates for Sander projects, which he also touched upon in his slideshow, was the concrete projects, which you can see Sander's still finishing up that through the hills driven, the HVAC units, the cameras, the vision mams, and flooring projects. So, we talked about that. We talked about the number, and so we're bringing that in just a little on, which Mr. McCarry explained. The next thing we talked about at the meeting was the track. We had, the district was investigating a product that is used by, question sports teams to cover a surface, it can be used on a track, surfaces or turf, to see what kind of cost would be associated with trying to come up with cover for the track that would be able to clean off if it snows. And so, the, the track would require a custom cover, because it has to go around spurs, you can't just buy a big square piece of tarp. So, the custom cover for the entire track would be around fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars. The concern is how to clear the snow off the cover, you know, in a timely manner. So, we, Mr. Duncan explained that the best option for that would probably be a tractor that has a snow blower, that is very light, tractors, it doesn't damage the track underneath. Because if it's too heavy of equipment, you can't drive it up the track, it'll push the track. So, that tractor would be an additional twelve thousand dollars. We also discussed the possibility that other spring sports that use the turf might be then interested in covers with the lacrosse team. So, that's something that could come up. So, basically, we're talking about a cost for the track cover of around sixteen thousand dollars, plus this tractor and snow blower. So, we wanted to talk about it with the board, to see, I know that the track team is interested in this, because last year with the bad weather, there was more time than usual where the track was not available. There's always some times in the winter where this is an issue, and then obviously, with the bad spring that we had, it went into the spring's worst season, I'm not just going to understand that. So, I guess the board has to talk about whether we're willing to pay for some of part of this equipment, and whether we're willing to work with any teams who are interested in fundraising. I'm just going to kind of open it up, because there's only four of us at the finance meeting when we talk about it. Who wants to go first?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, before we begin, as I say, see what kind of fundraising the various team clubs would commit to. I know there was a talk about the center of the field, the lacrosse team, then the track. So, I'd be curious to see what they would commit to, if they could, given the summer. You know, such a good athletic program, they'd get them to sound valuable. Practice time, that's so much larger obligations now on. It's a lot of money for what may not happen in the spring. Just.
It seems like it would be jacking.
The cover?
Where do we put the cover? Like, who, like, what do we do with the cover?
Well, apparently it's in the sheds, it's a factor.
I mean, it'll still fit. It'll fit all the other.
I think if they do a little housekeeping.
I'm just curious, because it seems like it would be like, especially if you include the turf in there, and that's like a big, heavy.
It's not that heavy. Well, I'll show you the fabric. I mean, obviously, when you put that amount of it together, it's going to have some weight, but it comes in segments. It's not like it's one large continuous piece, so.
All the down end's an ounce, and that's another.
Exactly, that's good.
I was just curious, is that what the act that you said that could, if we included the camera, like, who's going to put it on, is going to take it off? Because they're cleaning off, you know, it's a lot of moving parts for something that may never, never have to be used.
Well, I think in the winter, well, the process is spring sport, and in the winter, there's, there's usually some snow. Lucky winter, it went on milk and flour, school day, sticking out there.
We have no problem with that, we have to go very early.
And would this mean that no shoveling, no plastic shovels on the, later, would you still be able to shovel on top of that, on the tarp? On the tarp?
I think the idea was the snow blower.
The snow blower is a way we can call what happens, I mean, it is, it may be three hundred plump paths above the track. So, any small issue comes up, and we had old track lots of, what they call little hard spots, hundreds of little spots that we had to repair as we did this project. The idea is maximize longevity. So, yes, it does seem like it's a significant amount of money, but it does give us the flexibility to ensure that, you know, our teams could have access, if we had the state of bad weather that had happened, really think about protecting, ensuring the longevity of a major disaster.
It'll be quicker too, makes sure it takes forever.
That's perfect.
I have two, versus three things, you have a little bit of life expectancy, is a cover like this, and that would be in constant pieces, do you have the ability, let's say one section, has a problem, to just replace that section, or is it a full mix?
The project, product we're looking at is not, it's custom in the, that it's custom the shape of our, of our track, the dimensions of our track, the material itself, which is by a multitude of various professionals and professionals who are in the states. So, you know, I think if, give it more damage, I think if placed in perpetual repair, I don't know, it's a fairly accurate shape of the background, so it's a great opportunity. That was watching.
Karen's comments made me think of another question, which is resources and logistics. So, obviously, this is a huge cover, and we're probably only going to get one snow blower. So, if it snows in the morning, it practices, and we have to.
It's not going to happen. I mean, you have to understand, the thing that, if it snows in the morning, and the first thing that the grounds folks have to do is get the building.
So, there might be a case where we don't get the tarp down in time?
Well, I think we could, we could work at, we could work at that. We usually know we're going to get significant snow. If we're going to get significant snow, and that's why we're going to put it down, if we're going to get, you know, bridges of snow, and the sun's going to be, the next day, don't think that it's not weather that's an issue. You know, it's not snow that per se is an issue with the track, it's, it's really, you know, the clearing of the tracks that.
So, I think one of the things when we address various sports team clubs about the fundraise, is we need to create an understanding that it's still not going to be the number one priority, that we've got to get the sidewalks cleared, and the students in and out, and there will be cases of snow where we're still not going to have access.
But I think it could be something that could happen within forty-eight hours, whereas in the past, a little bit of it happened with the spring park this week. So, we don't want that, you know, just, you know, losing a day here and there, nobody wants to do that. But I think, you know, we have to be, balance what we have logistically in terms of people to do it, and to do it in a way that preserves that asset for us for the long run, so that we know, you know, we get, you know, what we're paying for, probably for, which is what your track.
I think we have to approach the teams and supervisors, to see what they want to contribute behind. I'm not a big fan of the project, but if the supporters and the parents are willing to pay, I can support it.
I just wonder, like, which clubs were happy to, or to, to, to ask, because one could argue that anyone who uses track or turf should help achieve the pay for it, if it's to increase longevity of the track, if we can have the tars and the snow blowers, you know, the snow blower to, to clear the track. So, I, I just don't know, would we ask all of them who use it, do we ask just the winter sports in the spring? I'm just throwing that out there, but, I guess, I don't, I don't know what, what each group's ability is to raise this kind of money.
Are you also referring to, like, local youth programs that, are you just saying, you're talking about like the turf?
Well, I'm talking like soccer, football, and other, other groups that use it. And I'm talking, you know, spring, fall, and winter track. Some of them are just kids, I know, but, like, I just, I just don't know.
Remember, it's, it's not, the genesis of, because I just predicted, the genesis of the tarp was not preservation of the track. The genesis of the tarp was the use of the track, and to do it in a way that would preserve or extend the change to long. So, if it's not properly managed, we still need to clear the track, we could shorten the length of the track. That's, the genesis was track, not really extended. We just let the snow melt. That's not, that's not helping for any of us.
So, in terms of what to do next, I guess we need consensus from the board, of whether we should have discussion with teams, if we're willing to, to, you know, open this possibility of sharing the costs, or seeing what teams are willing to do.
I'm in favor of approaching the culture and spring teams, if they need the two surfaces.
So, we'll get a report back to finance after.
Is there any sense of how much you would like to see the sports teams contribute? Because that's going to be their first question.
I would go for a whole lot more, because I don't think it's, I think the snow is going to melt. It's such a nice thing, and it's going to cost a lot of money to move it, store it. I don't think we want to pay thirty percent. It's such a luxury.
I just want to say that there will be shoveling. I mean, if we don't do something proactive to support the preservation of the surfaces, even though I understand what Dr. St. Zachary is going for the use, there will be shoveling, and there will quite likely be damage. I know the cross parent, I couldn't care less if they don't have practice, which is I apologize. The snow will melt, and there will be problems in the world. However, I, by the same token, I'm sat there in the parking lot, waiting for my daughter, watching people arrive with metal shovels, ready to shovel that brand new track and that brand new turf, relative new turf. So, I think there is a little bit more board interest in it, from the standpoint of the, it's a high-quality surface for both the track and the turf, and we want to keep it that way.
I think the metal shovels, if you catch someone in booting the coaches, metal shovels, that's above. I mentioned the coaches on purpose.
I mean, I think I agree with, I guess, Karen and, was it Chris the first? Was it you? You? Yeah, I agree also. So, like, maybe if they were going to.
And that's what we, that's what we had talked about, and it was kind of the recommendation.
Yeah, we talked about the, the tarp, and we talked about the equipment. Obviously, tarp itself is very specific to covering track and/or turf field, if you went that far. The equipment, on the other hand, if you buy a snow blower, obviously, you could use it for anything you want, and if you'd ever had a tarp, you'd still be able to use it for sidewalks, and what have you.
Yeah, cover of the tarp.
I think the tarp is the, is it going to be used first?
Well, your cover is fine.
So, we're talking about fifty percent of the.
Fifty percent covers, cover covers.
We didn't, we didn't price, we didn't price the cover.
You were saying, if you want it.
For the turf.
You're just going to say.
If you were, it seems very interesting.
Just for track.
Right, for the spring.
Or part of the turf.
We priced the track.
That price. That price is for the track.
If they wanted to cover part of the turf.
The turf would be square pieces, so it would be a little bit more.
Probably, but it's a cost.
Maybe the only part of the turf, so they have sections.
Right.
Okay, so I guess we have some direction. Okay, so let me just finish the finance minutes really quickly. The only other thing, I think, besides the agenda items that I need to report out in public, is we did have a brief discussion about affordable housing, and this one had the township. We, as most of you are probably aware, the township reported with another affordable housing development, so off of the mountain, the Borvar, which would have another two hundred and eighty units, and this is in addition to the two hundred and twenty units at Dibezettos that was talking about in the spring. So, both of those things happened after we had our demonic first report. And so, when he came, we knew that this stuff was coming potentially, and that he may have to revise his projections after we knew more. The problem is, we don't, he can't make projections until he knows the number of bedrooms and units, because he has to have a specific, you know, quotient, what's the quotient, right? For the number of students that would be in super-sized dwellings. So, we're planning on having an update or report as soon as we have more information from the township. So, right now, it's just on our radar as something, there will be some more students that are going to come in more, and so we're going to tie the other handle on that when we have more information. It's worth noting that both of those locations are over two miles from all different schools that we could go to, so that would involve cost to the districts because of busing, because they're forty-two miles from all of the, you know. because they're forty-two miles from all of the, you know, routes. Several of us, too, generally go to the township in the meetings, and so we are aware of that, but just for this, for this, I know that a lot of things, when you go in front of the planning boards, we need to sort of really pay attention to the planning board meeting.
That's where all the stuff is about.
So, that's where we're, so.
That's where the antics are.
So, anyone who has an interest in that should be following what's going on the planning board over the next bunch of months. Then we just went over the agenda items, the eighty-one agenda items on here. Items one to four are standing items. Item five is professional development expenses. Item six is a donation from Liberty Corner School PTO for an outdoor water fountain, which I think we discussed earlier, but this is the actual donation, so we thank them for that generous donation. Item seven is amended to the amount that was on last month for a donation from Oak Street PTO for water, bottle filling stations, so we thank them. Items eight and nine are disposal of equipment. Item ten is renewal of our contract to the bus company for the school team. Items eleven is a contract for parent transportation with student. Twelve seventy-seven are services and tuition for students. Item seventy-eight is approval of a field trip. Item seventy-nine eighty are services for students. And then item eighty-one, is the number right?
Yes.
Is tuition that we receive for out-of-district students to come into this district. Okay, does anyone have any questions about the report? Okay, can we have a roll call please, Mr. Burn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richer?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
We're up to the personnel committee report. We have forty-two items on that, but there's an agenda that is in your packet.
Make the motion.
Joy, you can make the motion.
Is it older, it's a second?
Okay. There is nothing to report because we haven't met since our last meeting, and I suspect very strongly that Mr. Mark Perry and Ms. Gipsai are gonna have a few comments once we go. Are there any questions on the floor we go?
Are there any comments from Mr.? Mr.?
I think they're gonna talk.
Yeah, but are there comments relative to the vote? In other words, if they're gonna comment, that would provide information, you have to vote, I will make here the comments.
It's about the session.
Oh, yeah. Fine. I can now vote.
Okay, can we have a roll call please?
Mr. Burn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richer?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
So, there are a lot of staff on being appointed on this list and are all amazing, but I think there's some sitting here in this room that they want to talk about.
Yes. So, we may tag team a little bit here. So, for starters, item number eleven, just going in the sequential order of the agenda, I wanna congratulate Mr. Fox, who's in his ear. So, Kristen is willing to take this position despite everything that she knows about me and she has to report to me. So, actually, I think Kristen and I first met each other way back in Hundred and Central Regional High School, when we were both teachers there. But our paths crossed again, having both found ourselves here in the Burners Township School District. That's something that we haven't found with Mr. Side, who also is thin over at Hundred Central Regional High School. So, we ended up all here together. But in any case, Kristen has been our social studies supervisor for ten, ten years running now. And she's done an outstanding job. And, you know, we, we had a pretty daunting task in front of us because our director of curriculum and instruction took a position in another district, which, you know, leaves a void in a very significant position. But after reviewing all the candidates and conducting interviews, we really came to a unanimous conclusion in the committee process that Kristen was the person for the job. So, we're very excited, we congratulate Kristen. We're really looking forward to her future there at Burners Township as the assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum and instruction. So, congratulations, Kristen. Okay, let's go on the order of the agenda. So, the, actually, let's jump to thirteen because it makes, oh, you wanna say a couple more?
Me?
Yeah. I put you on the spot.
I mean, thank you. I will do my very best.
Do my best, so you know what I mean.
We're excited, Kristen.
Yeah, very good.
All right, so we're actually gonna jump to thirteen just because there's, there was a connection there. So, obviously, when Kristen was promoted to this position, that left a void as the social studies supervisor. And so, it very, very dear to my heart as the former social studies supervisor, this was a very important position to fill. So, we did conduct interviews and it became readily apparent that we had a very strong, very strong person internally in that, Jen Rayfield, who's here today. And so, Jen was hired back in two thousand and seven. I can't believe that it's been eleven years and quickly became a very, very strong member of the staff at the high school, but has really made herself known across the district through her work in Steph College, through her work as an instructional coach this past semester, made an extra effort at the K-five level, so has really made connections there in such a short amount of time. And I can't tell you how happy I am to have her in that role and how committed she is to making sure that the instructional coaching program continues. So, that is, that is an extra bump. So, again, congratulations, Jen, we're very excited.
Thank you.
Just that I'm really grateful as a Burners Township community member, as a person whose children have been through and are almost been at different extension schools, that I'm thrilled to be in this role that connects everything I care about so much, which most importantly is the significance to our children.
And then just, just to jump up to number twelve, we also had a vacancy in special services. Our six-to-twelve special services supervisor is moving on, and so we had to fill that position. So, I know that this being an extremely important position in special services, we did conduct interviews. The position was posted about a month, about a month ago. And that also became readily apparent that that was a position that we had an extremely strong person at Cedar Hill, who I, I've gotten to know over the years, partially due to proximity when I would go over to Cedar Hill and I said, who's one of the best teachers to see in that building, and I was told to go see Stephanie Moore. So, I still remember popping into Stephanie's class in one of my first, she was here, just being wow. So, Stephanie's had experience across every grade level of the elementary level, but has, has made it quite clear that she is readily able to adapt to the six-to-twelve level, has become well-respected K-12 really, of her work in Steph College as well, and her dedication in the PDC or professional development. So, Stephanie, I've gotten to know really, really well, and thrilled as well with this, this position being filled. So, again, congratulations, Stephanie, and we welcome you to be Miss Jen Ray.
I'm very excited to continue my work as a special teacher in the special services department. Really great.
Okay, so, last certainly not least, item number fourteen on the agenda. We are very happy to have Hank Burner here, being appointed as our director of school safety and security. Hank has a rich history in the Burners Township, not just the Burners Township schools. Hank is a recently retired police officer from the Burners Township Police Department. And Hank, while he was working with the police department, put in three and then a fourth year period of time working as a school resource officer. So, he's intimately familiar with our district and many of our current practices with regard to school safety and security. And in filling his role, he will be taking over all the compliance issues associated related to school safety and be the primary liaison to the police department, which works out really well since he knows and proves the market so well. So, we're very excited to have Hank here, very excited to have this position filled, and really looking forward to Hank's role as the director, working to help all of the schools, all city buildings, improve their training and preparedness with respect to school safety and security. So, congratulations, Hank, we're very happy to have you on the agenda.
I'm looking forward to start next week. Keeping the schools safe, keeping all the kids safe, and the, and training the teachers and keeping them safe. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Hank.
We have a report. We had the meeting on June eleventh. All right, so we talked, we discussed, we talked about the school district calendar, which already ran out anyway. So, we had changed the language, how to re-allocate the snow days, and we changed the policy. So, there, we have some extra days within the calendar that we're gonna use for the beginning, for early snow days, and then anything that goes beyond before we have is gonna be back on. And that was sent out to everybody, and then, because we had our VTA, PTA sign off, and we, and then we were agreeing, we got all that, and so that's what my eyes for this year. We also talked about crisis response, a regulation we're sixty. Now, if anyone came to the presentation on the EDPAC, it would decide that we, we would need a threat assessment policy. And going over our current policies for crisis response, we decided we, we have a thorough policy and a couple of language changes and additions that could work well with the board. So, we're just gonna change the name from violent prevention to threat assessment. The, the formalized threat assessment team, and under the overarching role of the crisis management team. And we're gonna train all the SAKs and the school psychologists in threat assessment. They're on the front lines and talk to students, consider to have, to have made or been seen as device or persons or others, and we can bring the training to them so that the school days are generally. Also, we consider the qualification of outside evaluators. Once the internal assessment is made as per policy, the outside assessment is made as EDPAC, recommended, from a psychiatrist trained in threat assessment. We also talked about policy eight-three-three-zero, which is people records, and policy two-six-two-four, the rating system. We discussed the retention and disposal of people records. A mandate by law and the policy of P-two, P-two, P-two-six-two-four, as well as a look at the administrative code, it was determined that our language is clear and complete relative to disposal of people records. We discussed ways for me to get contents of our policies to parents and students, that we send out notices to parents and students in the student handbook in the beginning of school year. Also, teachers providing students and parents with annual notice regarding the disposition of permitted school, of student records, be it a website, your syllabus, downloads home to parents. Mandated people records are student records compiled by schools pursuant to the state statute, regulation or authorized administrative directive, like, for example, people's names, their addresses, phone number, their attendance record, their progress, their health history. A permitted people record are records that the board is authorized to be collected to promote the educational law for our pupils, assessments, ratings, and reports. We discussed the difference between the mandated permitted people records and under what circumstances permitted and mandated records may be used. We did, the first readings were already done, I think, at our last meeting.
Right.
For all the.
Yeah, and just as, I'm sorry to interrupt, just as a refresh, we can't do the second reading until after we have our next policy committee meeting. Our second reading will be on the agenda. So, we get the second reading.
We're gonna go over these, or?
In September. I think you already did.
We did, like, at the.
At the last meeting. Yeah, all the first readings we went over. So, we'll put them on for second reading, policy, in the beginning of September, and they'll be on the agenda for second reading at the second meeting in September.
Any other questions?
I would like to make a comment on the calendar. I believe Menda is starting school this week. And the importance of that, as the college kids and the families start school earlier and then get out of school earlier, our students go to school later and get out of school later. So, there's a, there's a couple weeks or more that were disconnected. And I would think long-term, it would be good if the public school system shifted their calendar to begin a little bit earlier in the year, so that the families have their kids together and not two or three weeks separated. So, I'm not suggesting it right away, but I think we'll look at the calendar and at least talk about maybe starting a little earlier and ending a little. Well, it is up to the association as well.
We'll have the tarp to.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I guess there's one item we need to remove, that one item on policy. Jen, one permission.
Mr. Burn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sward?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richer?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
We're up to the curriculum committee report.
Right, and curriculum committee met on July twenty-seventh. So, I have the report from that meeting, and it's actually, we talked about quite a few topics. So, the first topic we talked about was the academic integrity guidelines. So, Mr. Kraus and Ms. Fox convened with the teachers last winter to discuss the academic integrity guidelines, which have been in existence for several years, and some changes that are needed to address student cheating. The group met five or six times and researched other school districts, discussed community factors that may lead to cheating, created a list of suggestions for teachers to minimize cheating, and conducted a survey out of the seniors. And as a result, made several revisions in the section on level-one violations, which is the first part of the tier guidelines. The three changes were the teachers must report level-one violations to the appropriate assistant principal. Copying homework is no longer a level-one violation, and teachers will have more discretion regarding the consequences for level-one violations. The revised academic integrity guidelines and this list of suggestions to minimize cheating, cheating will be rolled out in fall twenty eighteen. The committee also discussed several topics related to academic integrity, including study groups and how they work, take-home exams, and the importance for teachers to communicate with students at the beginning of the school year about expectations, both for study groups and take-home exams, homework. Students are more likely to cheat on assignments that are not rated or worth fewer points. Use of technology to cheat, which has been a problem in some classes, where students share test questions in Google Docs and even make shared sections of improvised essays and then you're talking about. And tools are available that teachers can use to catch students who do this. Cellphone rules, students should not be allowed to have access to their cellphones during tests, including not having any backup. It was suggested that information be shared with teachers about suspicious student behaviors during assessments, because that's a, you know, sort of a major issue with cheating. We also talked briefly about test-related absences, where sometimes students would leave school, just like for a period, in order to miss a test and then come back. The RICH honor code, incoming ninth-grade students need to be told that RICH has an honor code and cheating is not acceptable. And Mr. Kraus said this topic would be added to information that is communicated, communicated to incoming students. And then a related topic, which we've actually discussed previously at some other committee meetings, is adding a teacher recommendation in addition to a qualifying grade for honors and AP courses. And this, the purpose of this would be providing additional information for the student and counselor to help with the selection of the appropriate course level. The teacher recommendation would not be a barrier to taking an honor to an AP course. The teacher recommendation would not be a barrier to taking an honor to an AP course, but again, it would just provide additional information. The next topic we talked about was revising the way that dropped courses appear on student transcript. Currently, the RICH student program, the RICH program of studies states that a dropped course will not appear on a student's transcript, whether the course is dropped for a study policy or to extenuate circumstances. And this policy has resulted in increasing numbers of students who drop a course, sometimes late in the school year if they're not satisfied with their grade. And Mrs. Smith, the Council Director, said that the National Association for College Missions Counseling and other professional organizations have policies that state a student's transcript should reflect the full course of study, including the W if a student drops a course. And she recommended that a W be recorded on a student's transcript if a student drops a course after the tenth day of the school year. And the committee was supportive of Mrs. Smith's recommendation. So starting in September, next, you know, coming month, all students in grades nine through twelve will receive a W on their transcript if they drop a course after the first ten days of the school year. The RICH program of studies will be revised, and also, this information will be added to the RICH high school profile, which is sent to colleges as far as data is possible. The next thing we briefly spoke about was summer assignments. This was back in July, and so, a last appearance about summer assignments was sent out on July 6, and a reminder was sent out in August. The next topic we talked about was monitoring grades at RICH. Committee members have requested information about the number of grades per marking period at RICH, and the timeline for entering grades and tasking. The staff handbook says that teachers should aim for one assessment or other graded assignment per week of school. It was noted that some classes are project-based, and there's usually no grade until the project is completed. The staff handbook also states that teachers should publish students, publish student grades every two weeks. And in some classes, you know, grades are not being published every two weeks for the guidelines, and so, to address these concerns, supervisors will communicate with staff about the guidelines at the beginning of the school year, and reports will be run and asked to check whether grades are being entered. The next topic was RICH final course grades for the past school year. Dr. Hyman distributed data on RICH final course grades for 2017 to 18, in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, and Word Languages, and we plan to discuss the data at our next curriculum meeting on September 7. We also, Dr. Hyman also gave an update on the different GNT program. It is 2018-19, it'd be year four. So Dr. Hyman reported that 68 boys and 51 girls will be in the grade three through five GNT program in 2018-19. So, and 52 students for the grade three GMT program were identified in spring 2018, including the assessments, the COGAP, the Ransbury Scales, and the Math. He said that overall, the number of identified students has increased, and that, for example, at Cedar Hill, 18% of students were identified, and at Mount Ross, 20% of students were identified, and this number is fairly high. So he said, overall, it has increased, that's the example. And if it becomes a trend, the assessments used for identification should be evaluated. We also had a mathematics update, so covering William Annan and RICH, some courses are with students. So we talked at William Annan, we had an update on grade seven algebra. 65 students took grade seven algebra in 2017-19. 103 students, which is about 25% of the seventh grade class, have qualified for grade seven algebra in 2018-19. There will be six sections of math eight at William Annan in 2018-19, the classes will be smaller. So each eighth grade team at William Annan will have two sections of math eight, three sections of algebra. All fifth grade GMT students were automatically enrolled in sixth grade accelerated math, and then additionally, about eight students who were not in the GMT program qualified for the sixth grade accelerated. We talked about honors algebra two final grades. So 143 RICH students took honors algebra two in 2017-19. And 25 students earned A for the final grade, 80 O, 26 students have final grade of C. One student had D. And then, no one failed the course, but a very small number of students either went through, received a pass, 41. And of course exams, honors algebra two and honors algebra two were administered last year. They were two-hour tests administered during the school day. In honors algebra two, eight students' final grades have changed after taking the end of course exam, and then in honors pre calc, only one student's final grade has changed after taking that exam. And let's see, final, was a brief report on health and physical education. This, at the time of the meeting on July 7, Mr. Schellow said that the summer curriculum revisions for health and beauty were in progress, so we are going to hear the report at our September 7. Does anybody have a question?
Just have one comment that I would just like stated for the rest of the board to hear. When we discussed the topic of the W on the report card, I was in favor of it being reported, but I was in favor of moving the number of days to 21, because I think 10 is just way too short. I don't know what happened to that discussion. I mean, I guess we just moved forward with the W, you know, really, yeah, talking about the number of days.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is just that exact question, I don't know where 10 came from, it seems really quick in, in my opinion, really quick and a little kind of arbitrary, is that how the kid can gauge whether they're in their appropriate class after 10 days, beginning of school? So there was some idea of the thought process of finding where 10 days came from, I'd be interested to hear that. Could you just tell me the policy on level changes, so if, how does that work, like with regards to the W? I know it said C, page 11 in the RICH program studies, is that my comment ended?
So, can I point to mine, I just jumping from personal experience? If you want to change, if you're a student and your student needs to change levels, typically that's not to go up, but to go down for some reason. You, you need to make the, well, in the past you haven't needed to, but you need to make the level change typically before the end of the first marking period was kind of the widely understood rule, I hate to call it a rule, I'm not sure it was a rule. But what happened is you kept the grade that you earned in the course you were leaving, and it came with you. So that's where that other comment that Linda shared about why the W is coming back, is because students were deciding they didn't want to have that grade later on in the year that they earned, because it wasn't up to standard, and that was typically in an elective. When a student drops a course to pick up the lower level course, now they have 10 days to make that decision when they get a W. In the past, that W wasn't appearing at all, and so you could drop a course in March if you wanted to, as long as they didn't fulfill an obligation for graduation, is that, is that correct?
So the drop, the W is only coming in place if it completely drops out of the course and doesn't change.
If you drop a course, that is on D.
Right.
But if you leave, that's, I'm going to use my daughter, she won't mind. If you change, if you change from, say, my favorite subject, honors algebra two, now to CP, CP algebra two, fairly common activity for some students, now you will see a W after those 10 days on...
No.
I thought it was only for dropping.
Only for dropping.
And we're not changing that.
Yeah.
No doubt.
That was a great question, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's not clear, because...
Alright, so that makes me clarify.
So then it's for something like a course that you have to, you don't have to have to finish the year.
Right, correct.
So to stay on track to graduate, you have to have four remaps.
Right.
So you drop for, it's my daughter, she was missing out, she dropped it for an elective class that she didn't have to have. It wasn't on her file. So I don't think that was clear enough.
But I also thought that if you dropped down within, before the end of the first marking period, nothing would, your old grade just gets averaged in with the...
In grade.
But that if you dropped down a level after the first marking period, it would show on your transcript that you were, so no, that's not...
I've got one. The most recent one, there is no evidence that my daughter was in honors algebra two of the grade. Right, so the grade is embedded in, which is a whole other thing.
That's a whole other thing.
Because now there's no evidence that you're in the higher level, and your first marking period grade may impact that.
I think that correctly we decided we were going to continue this conversation, but at a minimum, we were going to put a W for people who dropped a class.
Right. Right, the issue that was brought up is that people are like, maybe dropping a course in spring, and nothing would appear on their transcript, it was like they never took a course. And that was not typical at all, and it didn't adhere to the guidelines from the college admissions organization.
I say put it on the next curriculum, and I think we need more clarity around all of it, and particularly, this 10 days to decide whether or not you want to take the class makes no sense at all.
Well, how long is it? It's 10 days.
Yeah.
That's very fast, some students don't know.
My gosh, I don't have 10 days. Well, you have some of the subjects where this happens, it's like AP psychology, or one of the others, elective. So 10 days is a long time to figure out.
There's more questions? Okay, so, more questions? Yeah.
I have a question. When they talk about the 103 students qualified with base in algebra one, and that said that six of the GNT students did not qualify.
Right.
How many GNT students really altogether, what percentage of them did not qualify?
Oh, I think it's probably very small, but I don't know, that we didn't ask that question in the meeting.
Well, I don't know, my question was GNT.
Well, these kids though, but Jen, Jen, but Jen, these GNT students were not in the TELSCO math program.
They were just...
They were GNT students, because the TELSCO math program hadn't gotten up yet. So they hadn't been in the TELSCO.
Next year.
Yeah, they had been in these, they had been in the previous, yeah.
Yeah, 25% of the class is very, very high, it's like a...
It is.
Crazy, which is interesting, what planet going on.
I know, right, I know. And I know Ms. Bowman, the math supervisor, did point that out, that that was...
So what, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I think that's on a teacher topic.
Wait, I just saw that, and I was like, just work that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, last question, so what is the current process for teacher recommendation for honors and AP courses?
Okay, there isn't, now the criteria to get in, one of the classes is a grade.
Is just the grade?
And it's laid out in the RICH program of studies, what grade you need to have for each subject, so.
So what was, what was kind of the resolution of the discussion? Was it to tell teachers to make that recommendation to guidance counselors now, or it's still...
It was just a discussion about the idea of it, there's a decision. Right.
So it was different, you pass it after, you know, taking one test to enjoy, or taking three makeup tests to...
I mean, I think the idea in the conversation was to have it as a piece of information, but not like a barrier, so like, a teacher recommendation wouldn't be the deciding factor, but it might be piece of information if there was no explaining, you know, like, this kid got a C plus, but they were working too hard, and he's been first for a long time, and it's tutor versus...
But it could also be good for the withdrawal program?
Well, that was part of it, yeah, was try to cut down on the number...
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, to try to like, reduce the number of level changes, and students that are really struggling, because they're not in the proper level.
Right, yeah.
Which is important to note, because that's when the college prep classes get very crowded. If you have that sort of overreaching to the honors or AP level, and they drop down, class size increases for the students who ostensibly need this slightly smaller class size. So it's helpful not to find that.
So is the next process, and next step in discussing teacher recommendation recommendations is to kind of more formalize that, and say, this is something that all the teachers should do for honors and AP, is that the idea?
Well, we can talk about it, yeah, we need to talk about it.
Any other questions about the curriculum? We're up to the advocacy committee, which advocacy is on the, over the summer, so I had to mention. We're up to the SEL committee.
I do have a really old report, slightly younger than yours. It's from June 21. The SEL committee heard a presentation from the RICH high school SEL team, and that included Ms. Shadis, Mr. Kraus, and several members of the counseling staff. There was a detailed PowerPoint included in the minutes, and really not going to go, you know, dig deep into the details, because since then, we have Mrs. Smith, who has joined the counseling department as our director, and she is conducting a kind of a review of the material that was collected by this group, as well as conferring with other members of the counseling and high school staff. And the entire board will be hearing the outcome of that review sometime late fall or early, which... Mr. Seopola and Mrs. Uller came to the committee requesting support for the introduction of something called the New Jersey Child Assault Program, Prevention Program, and, sorry, important missing word. So they gave us a brief overview of how the program works, I'll just give you the really short synopsis, that it's a free-pronged educational approach to child abuse prevention, which includes training in staff in service of setting parent programs and individual classroom workshops for the students directly. The countywide bullying prevention program employs a whole school approach to raise awareness and identify types of bullying and harassment, uses role-playing guided discussions to educate students on self-assurtion techniques. Further, students are taught how and when to approach a trusted adult. Additionally, the program encourages anti-bullying and harassing policies, trains adults in appropriate intervention strategies, and promotes student communication, conflict resolution, and problems on the streets. The reason the case included is they were asking for the supporting of boys in the amount of $774. Ms. Shadis also addressed some concerns from the counseling department relative to caseloads at the elementary and high school levels. She noted that, that with the additional student assistance counselor added at William Annan, that was helping that building avoid some of the challenges that Lois and my son are experiencing. And she just kind of explained that this is something she was asking us to keep in mind. She gave an example that Cedar Hill has one counselor with 500, 55 students in the building. She has a caseload of 50 students for INRS and 50 Wolf Core, and is also the testing coordinator and anti-bullying specialist, which creates specific challenges in the springtime during testing. At RICH, it's a similar situation, but for different reasons. Despite the increased need for mental health counseling, the department continues to strive to maintain their excellent academic counseling, and, you know, just puts a strain on coaching counselors with so many students. There are a couple of other brief topics. There was a question raised about whether teachers and administrators have a means for tracking students who are habitually absent during the test period, and then return to the school after the test is over. This is something that was referenced in the curriculum report, and at this point, there is no concrete method for recording this type of data, which, you know, some community members have concerns about, because we're hearing more and more about this in the future. There was also a question that will be followed up on later, about the same topic we just asked about, teaching recommendations and council recommendations for honors and AP students, so that is continuing to be discussed at SEL as well. Mr. Kraus reported that the club and activity descriptions that have been mentioned a few times in various reports should be complete by the time school begins, so. It was suggested, I'm not sure who, that we add one or more student assistance counselors and school psychologists to the ad hoc SEL committee as the topics. counselors and school psychologists to the ad hoc SEL committee as the topics, as the next meeting is September 27th.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got a comment, I mean, I really don't think that they, they report, because they're reporting, you know, something that I think needs being, like, seriously, I really don't know if it's going to end, like, till it ends, whether it's the winter or whatever, so I think, I mean, it has some really good ideas in there, that we can cross as a, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I think, well, what I hear is, you know, I had this conversation with Mr. Mark Haring, but I think that Stephanie and her department are on the loose, and just.
Always having.
I think by the time we hear whatever she has to, to share in November, December, we'll probably find that a number of those are going to be moved from one college to the other.
This was concerned, this was like a eye-opener, or something like. Our, yes, you probably have one.
We're up to liaison meeting reports. Now, it's a public comment on non-agenda items, but to untell, leave an address, please, and sign in before after.
Hi, my name is Beth Sargent, I live at 26 Press Drive, and I am following up on the portion of the program regarding the infamous track and the park. So we welcome, I'm a representative of the Ridge Runners Club, so we welcome a meeting to carry on the conversation, to come to a resolution that works for everybody with figuring out how to keep the track usable all year round. And we, we will be very, very cooperative and open to suggestions, however, between the time, between now and the time that we meet, I need you guys to think about this, how do we account for the other ways that the track is used and damaged? And I'm not saying people are purposely damaging the track, however, things for example, like the high school graduation ceremony, you have how many people walking across the track, walking around the track in various types of bull wear, pushing wheelchairs, pushing strollers, and I'm not trying to say we need to shut the track down to use outside of sports, but please consider that it's not just the, the track team and their shovels, which, by the way, we don't use metal shovels, maybe in the past, but ever since the new track was installed, the Ridge Runners Club purchased on their own plastic shovels, so that there would be no metal type damage done to the track. So, so anyhow, I, I think there's a lot to consider beyond just the, the, the impact that the snow, those, that, how, how they handle keeping the track open and protecting the track. If you're going to ask us and the other teams who directly and indirectly use the track and the field to pay for whatever the solution is, well, then we're going to say you need to then monitor the use of the track by the public, by everybody else who are potentially damaging the track. It's unfair to essentially have us pay for something that might not even be the ultimate solution to keeping the track in use as long as possible. I think there are other things going on that need to be looked at, beyond the metal shovels possibly hitting the track, because we are more than, more than willing to keep using, to keep shoveling, using plastic shovels. So when we, when we do meet, can we please discuss the broader picture? And, on a side note, I'm done with that, on a side note, I just would like to say I'm so happy for these teachers who have gotten their promotions, I personally, I cannot tell you, given enough praise to generate feels, my daughter had her, and it was just a fabulous experience. Didn't have the honor of any of the other teachers, or my kids having any of the other teachers, but if they're as good as Jen, this school, Mr. Carrillo, is fabulous. Thank you.
So there's quite a close public comment. We're up to board forum, we have one item on board forum, which is our board, it's just the goals. I have a copy of them, for just, um, board members. Okay, so it's a double-sided page, it just, it's very brief, I'll read it to you guys. One side has the Burners Township District Goals, these are district goals, districts have goals, they're two-year goals, so I guess we'll talk about those first, and then the board has to have goals each year, so.
Sure, sure, so, we, uh.
I thought that we were.
Oh, is there not? Let's, let's start with the district goals.
Let's start with the district side, that's the one, period on.
We, we, right, well, we had some, we had a couple conversations, one was for district goals, the other was for board goals, so tackling one at a time. The district goals are largely about, about frankly, the superintendent and the administration in accomplishing work and it being evaluated, so these kind of set forth some to-do things, really, for the administration and the staff to focus on. If you recall, in the last two years, we focused largely on academic and social-emotional issues, along with evaluation associated with technology, and what I'm proposing going forward, we've already had some preliminary discussions about, and I've worked with the admin team on trying to craft some simple language that can capture the direction that we've, we've already invested a lot of work kind of carrying some of our work forward, and, and first and foremost, I listed item number one as improving on the district's overall capacity to ensure safety and security. So clearly, this is something that is ongoing, it's something that every district is responsible to work on all of the time. However, we have been really emphasizing this in the recent past and also going forward, involving a lot of the different bits that we've already done, you know, from Hank's pointer tonight, I think that's a significant capacity builder, to have somebody that can be in-house and really dedicated to this topic of safety and security with our buildings, with our staff, with our training, with our plans for crisis intervention, having somebody who can focus on that, and also ensure compliance requirements with respect to all the different state mandates. It's a big job, but I know Hank is up for it, so we really look forward to having, and board, that's just one component, obviously, we've also worked on facility-type issues, talking about all of the different entrances, some of which we're highlighting on the presentation tonight, talking about the entrance to Ridge, the board's efforts to approve two different documents tonight, including the ability to hire SLIO staff, working in collaboration with the town, and also adding to that the ability for the police department to have insight into our security camera systems, another couple of steps that we've taken. So we are, as you can tell, very well underway with regard to work to grow capacity for safety and security, installing the safety, installing the cameras around the district and upgrading, really replacing cameras that were basically defunct at William Manning and Ridge, to the point now where we can actually remote into those cameras from places like the police department, under circumstances dictate that's appropriate. So we've, we've got a lot underway in the area of safety and security, and those are some things I'd love to be my topic with. The second item is to strengthen the ability of the staff to promote social-emotional health well-being outcomes through staff development. So obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we started an emphasis on social-emotional with our last district goal, this provides a little bit more focus in continuing our efforts with our staff development programs. One of the things that we're, we're doing is having the entire staff take a look at a text called The Other Side of the Board Card, which is kind of taking a look at some of these SEL issues and how to work with students and parents to communicate about how students are doing in those areas, and also professional development, things like having the staff trained on mental health first aid, we had the entire administrative team trained on mental health first aid over the summer, we've got staff college campuses running in that regard. So we're really working to try to not only have voluntary activities such as those, but also mandatory activities, reading packs, activities involving suicide prevention training, and also, of course, the Juicy training through every year. So we're working pretty hard on that already, a lot of activities are taking place underway as well. And then finally, the third goal, which, which really encompasses not only efforts for the district staff, but also for the board, so it represents a very important goal for the board as well, and we'll see it as the first item under board goals on the reverse side, and that is to work on the strategic planning process, this project that we've undertaken with the Children's School Works Association, to basically host some, some meetings where we can talk about the direction that we really want to take the district long-term vision-wise. And I think that, I'll be surprised if a lot of what is talked about there isn't related to many of the things that we're already working on, you know, I'll need to find out what we're working on areas that you think are important, but I, I think that that is a very important process to kind of do a barometer check, and like, people need to talk to us about priorities and goals, and look at how the work is happening in the district in relationship to, you know, general feedback that we receive in that project, so I think that's a great goal, one that's really important for us to work on. We've been inviting both staff and administration to get involved in coming to those meetings, and in addition, we've been inviting the community, I remind folks about it a couple times last school year, and again, in my message that went out to parents on Friday, I sent out another reminder, so hopefully we get some good turnout for those. Those are the district goals.
You may have mentioned those, please, I don't want to be on the spot, but I just tried to look them up.
Uh, sure, they are on the district website, so let me mention them real quickly, if you go under board of education, and you look at meeting dates, so they're very busy in the fall, this fall, the first one is October 1st, and October 15th, and, so I can echo here, then November 15th. So those meetings are all at the Bridge High School Cafeteria, seven o'clock, obviously they, they're going to be a different format than this format, they are not meetings that are going to have agendas like we have here, where we're voting on items and doing the reports, they're much more of a dialogue, that's why we're using it in the cafeteria, we have a small group discussion, open tables on the place, so, yeah, those are the dates, October 1, October 10.
Sure. I'm concerned about academic performance achieved, particularly in light of the social-emotional health changes. I don't believe the kids are studying the sort of things too, everything I read, scores are probably dropping, so I would like to see item two expanding to include, you know, the board, I think, there's a question, my, my, it's slipping.
Yeah, that was a lot of our, yeah, I mean, last time, two of our goals were very general. One of them was to improve academic outcomes, which is kind of what schools should be doing, what we should be doing, so we were trying to make these a little bit more specific, it's not like this is the only thing we're doing, or the only part of, like, even though it's the number two, it's not like just doing professional development is the only part of the social-emotional goal that we're working on, we're working on all the parts we've already worked on before, this is just one specific one as a area of this, how does that make sense?
I, I think it's so closely related with the social-emotional, the telephones, drugs, all of the other things that are going on, but if you're not losing, and I think you are, losing academic performance, it would be a mirror, I think you've got to include that in the, in the strength of your program, because the kids are slipping, and I don't believe.
That would be an outcome of number two, if we observed everyone's social-emotional outcomes, then.
Well, yeah, but it's related.
They're related, yeah.
Because of this, I think the academic side's, and I would argue, fix the weaknesses, but make darn sure you don't lose the strengths. I think you're losing the strengths, because the kids are being very distracted today. So that's my.
I have one comment, I kind of, I'm trying to, I can't figure out how to word this, I remember two, but.
That must be.
Okay, but I, like, I want, like, the outcomes part, like, I want, like, staff, I, I said, it sounds to me sort of like staff development to improve outcomes for students, even though it doesn't say that, so I want to focus on the staff's social emotional wellbeing, to how to like phrase it.
That's why I liked it that way, so they can capture staff.
And I'm curious, when the staff members that participate in the strategic planning process, I'm interested in what ideas the staff members have for the accomplishment.
And that's going to be so general, it's not going to be very strategic planning.
We know, it's our first time, we haven't done it.
Well, I'm just telling you, it will be very general, and let's have the best school and the best.
Are you commenting through it?
Uh, we'll see. I don't know.
Because you can give us your thoughts there, yeah.
I, I want to see anything that looks like a strategic plan, I think you gave us a sample, and it was all generality.
We didn't do it like that.
Well, but you gave me a sample of, of another district, it's all generality.
Yeah.
Well, then your input is very important.
No, the input has to be curriculum and academic performance, as well as everything else, that's the key to the whole thing, and you know you can have a list in here.
I suppose it is.
Well, strategic plan is general.
Does anyone else, I think it's in our admissions, yeah, I think it is, actually, it is.
It's been added.
Does anyone else have any, any district goals?
Okay, on the other side, board, the board goals, we had originally talked about four of them, and I think the way we left it at the end of last retreat was to just list the first two as official goals, only because when Gwen was here, she was saying four goals is a lot, you know, and then two, we want to work on the other part, but they were more general, so we were kind of pick very specific ones as our official ones, but again, doesn't mean we're not working on the other ones, the other two were improving education, improving patient, and participating in opportunities to expand on working knowledge of the district. So those were eleven of them.
Yeah, I remember that I pushed strengths and weaknesses ahead in public, that you talk about the strengths of the district, and the weaknesses of the district, and that's why vague communication should be public, more efficient, we don't talk about a lot of things in this board, that just are unfalling information, that should be made public, which you can talk about, it doesn't happen. I think performance and strengths and weaknesses is the key to drive the public communication, which I think is very poor on this board, that's my opinion.
Like, it's still not appropriate for you to say that, and we be dangling out there, leaving the public with the impression that this board of education, that the Bridge Township School District is not sharing with the public, because that's what we do, did you not listen to the incredibly detailed report that Lenny just gave on one singular curriculum meeting?
Yes.
So you were reviewing, like, that was sharing with the.
I'm, I'm coming back to, anything you learn, you have to talk about what you're good at and what you're not good at, this board doesn't talk about that, we don't talk about the strengths and the weaknesses, the things we have to fix, and running any business, any anything, you have to focus on.
I think there is a laundry list of things that we're talking about.
Yeah, we had a lot of, is everyone else okay with listing these two as our official board goals, for the purposes of.
For the purposes of having a social board goal?
Yeah.
And one last point. The reason I'm still on the board is because I stuck this with the most.
That's not a good reason.
So I get to at least voice my opinion.
Hey, is there anything else for board forums that I know of? Anything else for board forum? Okay, we're up to a charm there. Is there any information to bring up? Do they have to all say, or?